Father God, we thank you so much for all the many blessings that you have given us. We thank you for your love and your grace. Most of all, Lord, we thank you for loving you enough that you gave your son, that we all may have eternal life if we just choose to believe in you. We ask, Lord, that you put a hedge of protection around our workers, that we continue to stay well and that this epidemic is short-lived. We ask that you just cover this office, cover the courthouse, and cover all of the districts, that we be safe. And that we continue to keep in mind that you're the person in charge and that we are to behave and to say and treat everyone to glorify you. We need to remember that those of us who believe in you are representatives of you. And if we have someone that doesn't believe in you, Lord, please bring one to you. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do the minutes. I don't see a whole lot of public discussion here.
I'm trying, unless he goes straight across.
Yeah, I could reach that. So it's good.
There's not as much in it now as there was the last time.
He always want to spill them on their hole. I'll make the motion on the minutes.
All in favor?
I got three tins also, but it sure looked like there was no ring on it. I blinded all my media again, but I must have had it. I thought it looked like there was some more.
It don't take much.
That's the thing. Two or three tins is like an inch and a half because there's no place for it to go.
That's true. I have water rope at my house. I could buy that shelter though. But I've never seen water just stand there or a baby kid crying. And my neighbor's missing a baby kid, so I drove up there to see what it was.
I need to quit cleaning this table. It used to slide right across. You just kind of give them a little slide and then you gotta push them across.
It's a different cleaning.
I think they washed and finished clear off of this thing.
Using insecticide.
It's working my tail off with these papers sliding across.
All the insecticide, geez. Didn't mean that.
I have a bug. I have a bug.
Just pesticide, Tom, damn.
Cleaning the germs.
Oh, you got the germs.
Disinfectant.
They got so many germs cleaned off paperwork while he was sliding.
Those cockroaches.
I know this. All get together and party. Yeah, they canceled that. Can't do down there to drink and party. They're just taking all the fun out of life. Just how heavy an old boy is that?
I am getting older.
They made that late.
We moved Ashley up to her house to operate out of it. First thing she loaded, that we loaded, was her chair. She said, "I'm not going to sit on a hardboard chair in my house." Well, it...
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah. I move with step in and on one second. All in favor? Blanket purchase orders.
Top one is county general and the bottom ones are all ambulance.
And all other needs something.
Yes.
Well, that might be a tough order. Tore it paper and paper towel.
Get double it.
I move with step like it.
I'll save it.
All in favor? Road crossing, are we getting it? No. Transfer of fund for correction of beginning balances for OASU extinction.
I respect these two lines transposed on that original spreadsheet. Why it's taken them to now to notice it, but I'm just taking out that full 50% on both accounts and then entering in the actual amount that was on there. It was their contractual services and their capital outlay. I just transposed the two lines.
A correctional error.
If you don't make one once, well, I will thank you in due.
Is one place designed?
Yeah, yeah. That's just all the backup just showing. I thought I'd attach all of that just to let you guys see it and all everything.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Sure, certificate of compliance for OMA business for anchored two farms LLC. Where's that located at?
This is down in Marvin's area. So Marvin, each one of these lines where it says signature, you want me to print the rest of it? I can only look at one, two, three, four, five, six places where you design and then I've attached the letter and just to call him. Seeing this thing.
What did she say on the back?
No, the letter is attached on the back.
So you need to read it.
Yeah. Want yourself a number on this or a shop number on this?
I move with step certificate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Report of conference or district 12 and 3.
Did you guys get, all of you guys get your...
I don't know why they inspected one of the bridges. It's a FEMA replacement deal, but oh, well, they did.
I wanted to make sure my watch.
Your watch agreed with his watch.
I don't always agree with Jay.
Hey. You're probably pretty smart.
I just put a different date on there just to be...
Okay. I move with check the inspection invoice. All in favor?
Aye.
Memorandum of agreement.
That was the report of conference that you just made the motion on this.
Oh, yeah.
And there's just one, there's for one suggestion on this one.
Invoicing back here.
Can you drive the jump over, darling? Good?
Yes, I are. You're right. That's a print.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we go with the memorandum of agreement.
There's just a slot for one chairman on that one.
Do we do or not provide any office space tonight?
That's why I didn't know why they were...
Why do we need to sign it?
It was brought in. I was...
Did you guys know that it was brought in? There's a letter that went to it. I have a copy. That's a copy.
The Sills says to please sign their agreement.
It's for, it's for before. The time is already done.
That's what I'm, that's what I took it as reading is it's for the previous that they already used it. Why would you sign an agreement after they used it?
Can I see that?
Wait a minute.
It says final up there. That would be the only thing that I could...
DHS vacated the building on October 31st, 2019. We're going to make a one-time final payment to reimburse South Alpa County Commissioner for July 1, 2019 through October. So now I understand we'll read through after that.
It says final to you.
Yeah. Move with step the agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Written quote to sanitize the courthouse and Spokane Clean LLC. And I was totally shocked when he got that estimate. I thought he'd reach a lot higher than that.
Yes, it's a sign you don't want to do that.
And he also told me that when, when they, we open the courthouse back up, they'll come up and touch up anything in that.
What does all this tell? Are they going to clean the whole?
No, they're sanitizing. They're not cleaning.
They're sanitizing. It's all three floors and the jail.
What's that going to tell? Some kind of fogging machine or...
Well, according to what I was told this morning, they got backpacks they wear and go around and sanitize with the, similar to what I think Orkin does for us for pest control.
But instead of just going around the corner, it's like they spray everything.
They do the whole area. They done the school over here.
They did AUC.
Three times this year. They've done AUC. And I was, I was sure we'd be looking, that's 10 cents a square foot. I thought it was cheap to get it done.
What's the total?
The what?
What's the total?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three hundred and forty dollars. And there's lots of...
That's for one time?
Mm-hmm. There's a, well...
And that stuff last for, I mean, when they do that, it...
Now, he didn't tell me the longevity of it.
I, I've never heard either. I would think there would just be...
Whatever there is.
Yeah. If somebody comes in that is contaminated, we've contaminated the courthouse again, but at least it's...
But we know it's a one-time deal.
Yeah, sanitize everything at that point.
Everything sanitized.
Which should just be us contaminating it since the public's not coming in.
You probably would take that, the 10 cents a square foot and figure out the chemical we had to do it.
Oh, yeah.
We'd have to have a licensed person that went to school in order to do it. That might be real cheap.
Just the PPE alone to have it on you to spray, I mean, it's going to be a huge amount.
I move with step the quote to sanitize.
Second.
All in favor? Road use and maintenance agreement with update with the benefit A and B.
Here's the, the email that she sent me. She said to call her. There's just some updated maps here. She's, she emailed that, then she FedExed the actual, which I don't have a color copier. She then sent the colored copies. If you guys want to actually look at these colored copies.
The wind farm.
Yep, this is the wind farm. It's updated maps and she said to let you know that it was updated maps and roads that they were going to be utilizing now. Here's actual colored ones. You want to look that up.
What if that company called again?
Is it Nextera?
Nextera, yeah. I think that's it. Yeah. She's actually with Aurora Energy Solutions that sent this in.
So they're sending in maps of all, so they're carrying forward.
We got all three signed.
Are they maps of the lines or maps of the road?
Maps of the updated roads. So it's updated road maps and...
And it's where the windmills are.
Can you forward that email to me so I'll have the maps in the office and then we have to...
We sign newspapers here?
No, the agreement is just an agreement that you guys have already signed.
Just an update.
Yeah, it's just an update.
So they're, when either they're just carrying forward with the project or there's no change right now?
Well, I don't know whether they changed it or not. I've never looked at the previous maps, so... It's an update if they're going on different roads or if they're going on different...
Well, they did change some of them.
I was just wondering if the virus deal had changed any of their deadlines or their project as they progress. You know what I mean?
I don't think that changed any of it.
Not to my knowledge it didn't. I know they added tomorrow Marvin in there right down Alpa County and took some away from the oil field because of that.
The circles are 1,450 feet from set back from a house. And you can see the little windmills right here.
Yeah, you can see them right there. Quite few of them.
I want to get a nosebleed flying high enough to get over the top of them.
Yeah. These maps are for us to keep or you need those back?
No, there are, I mean, I think there's like three copies of each one, so you guys can take those and then I'll forward it on to you and then you have that. I just, I didn't have a color copy to, to print them in color. So she sent those originals there that weren't color then. So I guess you guys just need to approve the updated road maintenance.
Also move we accept the updated version.
I'll save it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any unforeseen business?
Just to let you guys know, I think Valerie and I's office are both going to cut it down to two people at each time, just so there's nine days. So, because we cannot shut down her office or my office, so... so to kind of spread out that amount of time that we are with one another, we're going to do that just to...
Oh, rotation deal. And I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Like I said, she'll have enough to man her office. There may be times that they're gonna want to pull your hair out because it's a little bit busy, but I'll have a name records and a person purchasing it all the times also, so. We'll kind of go by that way and that would be a nine-day segregation of one another. So if someone gets sick, maybe within that time they'll have the symptoms. So then we can just quarantine one other person instead of having to quarantine all of us.
Let me like get the plan. I move with Gary.
I'll save it.
All in favor?
Payroll by Wednesday.